From Monday, May the 6th, 2019, want to welcome everyone. Pastor Richard L. Bush, Mount Zion Baptist Church at 1789 Hawthorne Avenue is coming forward now, who will lead us in our invocation and the pledge to the flag. Would everyone please stand?
Evening, Mayor Baker, city officials. God bless you all. Let us bow our head. Most holy and gracious God, our Father, who have been so good and kind to us, we say thank you. We thank you for our last night laying down. We thank you for our early rising this morning. God, we thank you because you've kept us this far. You've allowed us to see a day we've never saw before, one we'll never see again. So therefore, most God, would just say thank you. We thank you for life, health, and strength, and we pray that everything that is done in this room be done in decency and order. God, we pray that you be glorified, the devil be horrified, and the people be edified. God, we thank you because of your kindness, your mercy, and your grace. Now, dear God, we ask you, God, Lord, to do these things because you've done them so many times before. Now, we ask all these blessings in the precious, prominent, prodigious name of our Lord and Savior. Amen. Thank God. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice.
Thank you very much. And the Mount Zion Baptist Church is located at 1789 Hawthorne Avenue, and I'm sure they'd love to have you come as a guest and join, or if you're just looking for a change, they provide a great service to our community. Agenda changes, I don't think we have any. Under the mayoral report, we got some proclamations and some recognition. 2019, 157 proclamation, recognition of Memorial Day poppy distribution, May 11th, 18th, 27th of 2019. Is there anyone here to receive that proclamation? Y'all please step forward, and I'm going to ask Councilmember Welsh to read that, and we will present that proclamation to y'all.
Thank y'all for coming out this evening. A proclamation by the mayor of the city of Smyrna, Memorial Day poppy distribution. Whereas America is the land of freedom, preserved and protected willingly and freely by citizens, soldiers, and whereas millions who have answered the call to arms have died in the field of battle, and whereas a nation at peace must be reminded of the price of war and the debt owed to those who have died in war, and whereas the red poppy has been designated as a symbol of sacrifice of lives in all wars, and whereas the American Legion Auxiliary has pledged to remind America annually of its debt through the distribution of the memorial flower. Now, therefore, I, AMAX Bacon, mayor of the city of Smyrna, do hereby proclaim during the month of May in 2019, the 11th, 18th, and 27th as the Memorial Day poppy distribution, and ask that all citizens pay tribute to those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the name of freedom by wearing the memorial poppy. In witness whereof, I herein too set my hand and seal into the city of Smyrna to be affixed upon this sixth day of May in the year of our Lord, 2018. AMAX Bacon.
As Corky brings that down, y'all have several days this year, I think, for poppy days. Is that correct?
Yes, we will be distributing poppies on May 11th and May 18th at the Kroger on South Cobb Drive, the Kroger on Atlanta Road, and the Walmart on the East West Connector, as well as on Memorial Day at the city's celebration. And tonight, of course, if you'd like some, we have them. And I had a special message from one of our members, KK Roser, for you, Mayor Bacon. She said, "Tell him to come off the hip with his donation."
Come off the hip?
With me today, we have one of our junior auxiliary members, Courtney Waybright, who will read the poem written by Lieutenant Colonel John McCray while serving on the front lines. It's called "In Flanders' Field." That field was covered in red poppies, representative of the bloodshed.
In Flanders' field, the poppies blow between the crosses row on row that mark our place, and in the sky, the larks, still bravely singing, fly scarce herd amid the guns below. We are the dead. Short days ago, we lived, felt dawn, saw sunset glow, loved and were loved, and now we lie in Flanders' fields. Take up our quarrel with the foe. To you from failing hands we throw the torch. Be yours to hold it high. If ye break faith with us who die, we shall not sleep, though poppies grow in Flanders' fields.
Thank you.
Now, I know the answer, but what war was that? Was that World War I?
That was after World War I.
Yes.
They say that it flourished in Europe because of all of the lime from the rubble from the war.
How about that?
No.
That was the war to end all wars.
We have a photographer here.
Didn't work. Thank y'all.
We are going to come up front with it.
Here, I got a 50.
Get a 20 on that.
Probably a five. It's really not a 50, so five, that's the biggest bill I got. Tell KK not to ever embarrass me. Well, you know, that really didn't embarrass me. That's nothing. Thank you. Thank you. I'll give y'all more of the dedication. Excellent, excellent on the point.
Thank you.
Thank y'all so much. Item B, under the mayoral report, is a presentation of the GACP State Certification to Smyrna Police Department. Derek Norton's name is by that. I'm sure he's going to ask Chief Hook. God, Chief Lee. That's twice I've done that tonight. Twice.
Yeah, Chief Hook, come on up.
Unbelievable. I got Chief Hook on my mind. David Lee, our wonderful police chief. Derek?
Yes, sir. I know that this certification is no small feat. There's a lot of work been gone into this, and I'll invite Chief Lee to come up here and talk a little bit about what they've done and how much money it's going to save in premiums and all of those different things.
Sorry. If that's the worst thing I can do to you.
Put the tires on that new Nova you got.
It ain't going to be the first time.
No. We've been working on this for a couple of years, and this, obviously, it's going to save us on liability insurance by having this. Will save the city approximately $30, $35,000 a year by having this. You know, that's one part of it, but the other part is, is what it's doing to us, saying that we are a professional police department. We have to meet 450, 129? Okay, 129 standards, but that translates to about 450 policies. And with that, with this, I'm going to turn over. Mark Bender is with the Georgia Association Chiefs of Police, and he's the one over the certification process. Mark.
Good evening, everybody. As David said, I worked with the Georgia Association of Chiefs of Police. I retired as the Assistant Chief of Police in Shambly, and actually did this job for almost 15 years. And the amount of work that goes into it to become state certified is no small feat. And that being said, as the chief mentioned earlier, there are currently 129 standards. When you move over to sixth edition, there's 138, so they go up from there. But nevertheless, the, over the course of the years, the insurance carriers, especially through the Georgia Municipal Association, has recognized this program as being one that fosters a professional agency. It also ensures, and the agency has to ensure with itself, that they adhere and maintain compliance with these policies, or with their policies. And in order to meet the standards, that's what the agency has to do. And like I like to tell the certification manager and the chief, the first one is the easy one. The one in three years is going to be the hardest one you do, because that'll be your first recertification. So, but anyways, it's a great honor. I've known David for many years, and he's, excuse me, one of those professionals that we always go back and forth. I was an infantry guy, he was an MP, so we're just kind of like, you know, go back and forth. But anyways, the, I've known David, and it gives me immense pride to present to you your very first State of Georgia certification plaque.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
You know, we have worked on this, and it's a team effort, but we had a team leader. And I want to recognize Andrea Boies, who is our certification manager. She's a tough lady. Don't let her petite size fool you, but she does a fantastic job. And like I said, she was a frontrunner in making this happen. Thank you.
And along with that, we also, at the Chiefs Association, like to recognize the certification manager as well. So we also provide an award for the certification manager, and I'd like to present this to Andrea. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Just a few words would be great.
That's my favorite thing to do. I love speaking in public. But this agency, to be honest with you, was a good department when I got here. We've got a great chief. Our CEO is phenomenal, and when you have a great leader, that kind of trickles down. The command staff has been incredible, all the way down to, you know, our road patrol. And everyone's just really been open to improving. It's very difficult to take a look at your own practices and critique them, but everyone did that. They got together, and everyone wants to improve, so I'm really proud to be a part of this organization.
So is there a little pressure on when three years rolls around?
I'm not concerned about it yet. Ask me in two and a half years, and I'll let you know. But we're already doing well. We're well on our way into our first year of showing compliance, so we're doing well.
Thank you very much. I didn't think you'd say anything. I just...
Oh, they told you to put me on the spot.
Well, David did.
Did he? Okay, was it all right?
No, he did not. I just did that. Chief, I know you've got a lot of your command staff here, if you want to, since I guess they're on overtime, I guess.
They're comping now.
Comp, yeah.
Okay, I'll go ahead and introduce. This is Deputy Chief Robert Harvey. Turn around, face everybody, so I see. And Deputy Chief Joe Bennett, and then I have Major Terry McCormick. Behind him is Lieutenant Kenneth Owens. The next, Major John Carter. Sitting next to him is Major Frank Durance, and Major Super Freak Rick James. That's actually his names. And Officer, Master Patrol Officer David L. Rodd in the back here. I also want to thank our fire chief, Roy Acre, for coming out here and supporting us with this, too.
Good day. Congratulations. I think we're very fortunate. Smyrna has a great public safety, both fire and police, but we appreciate all y'all do for everybody, so thank y'all very much. We look forward to three years. I'll check with you in two and a half years. And I'll remember it now. I may not remember what his name is, but I'll remember to check. Thank y'all very much. Thank y'all very much. Congratulations. Item C, under the mayoral report, is recognized City of Smyrna employee Dat Lu as recipient of the City of Smyrna Award for Ongoing Excellence in Customer Service, and Andrea Boies as recipient of the John Quill Award for Service Excellence in Action. Ashley?
Yes. Good evening. So I am here to present the City of Smyrna Customer Service Awards for the fourth quarter of 2018. Our first award recipient is Dat Lu. He is awarded the City of Smyrna Award for Ongoing Excellence in Customer Service. Dat serves as the IT manager within the city's IT department. Anyone in the city who works with a computer has, at one time or another, worked with Dat. He has always shown a respectful and helpful attitude when working with people, and works tirelessly to solve issues related to IT and otherwise. While most of his work is with other city staff, he has also helped others who are not city employees with city services.
Congratulations, that.
You're in the background, Mayor.
I know it. Dat, you want to say something?
I just wanted to thank Mayor and Council, administration staff for recognizing me, and all my coworkers I work with. You guys definitely put a smile on me, on my face every day, so it's a pleasure working here.
Dat knows his stuff. Thank you, Dat.
Thank you.
Our second award recipient for the night is Andrea Boies. She is awarded the John Quill Award for Service Excellence in Action. She works in the police department as the accreditation manager, and took it upon herself to reach out to new police officers going through training who are military veterans to help them get paid from the GI Bill for training. Andrea has helped officers receive over $20,000 in back pay from the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs. This was not part of her job responsibilities, but she decided to step in and help her coworkers and the department.
She looks just like the girl that was up here earlier.
She's a veteran as well.
Yeah. Congratulations to both y'all.
Mayor, if I may say, we have also gotten additional positions approved for OJT benefits, communication officers. Eventually, we'll get jailers, but we've gotten the canines, and detectives are on the way. So I don't know if you're familiar with this, but my position next to IA is the most disliked in agencies. So really, this was just my way to get people money and kind of get some buy-in.
You should move up next door to me, then. You'd be next to the most hated person. Thank you very much. Thank y'all both for all y'all do for the city. Thank y'all very much. That's what makes the city as good as we are, as folks like this, and all of our employees that work hard every day. Item four is land issues, zonings, and annexations. We have nothing under that. Five is privilege licenses, none. Item six is formal business, A ordinance 2019-09, adopt ordinance 2019-09 to amend the City of Smyrna Code of Ordinances, Chapter 50, Fire Prevention and Protection, Article 1 in general, by the adding of Section 50-7, outdoor burning of the Smyrna Fire Code. Ms. Tammy Sadler Jones, the background, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. The city of Smyrna has never had an ordinance that addresses outdoor burning. With the dense population in a relatively small geographic area, outdoor burning of yard waste and trash has become an issue. This amendment would address and define what is and what is not allowed while burning outdoors. Restrictions on outdoor burning would not apply to grilling or cooking using charcoal, clean wood, propane, or natural gas. A free residential burn permit would be required for burning clean wood. Those permits would only be issued October 1st through March 30th. The burning of recreational fires within any property used for anything other than a residence of one or two families shall require a special use permit from the fire marshal's office. Our fire chief, Roy Acre, recommends approval of the proposed ordinance amendment.
This is under the committee leadership of Mr. Derek Norton. Mr. Norton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Ms. Sadler Jones said, this will just add more specifics to our ordinance, make it easier for the chief and his department to enforce outdoor burning regulations and protect Smyrna citizens. If there's no questions or discussion, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve item 6A, amending Code of Ordinances, Chapter 50, relating to outdoor burning.
I have a motion, second, to approve this ordinance amendment. Is in discussion, although it's in favor of motion. That's approved 7-0. Item 6B, under formal business, 2019-159, authorization to pass along credit card processing fees to the customer effective July 1, 2019, in coordination with the fiscal FY 2020 budget. Ms. Tammy Sadler Jones, the background, please.
The city currently accepts online credit card payments through various platforms for various city services. While customers pay in person using a credit card, the city currently pays the fees associated with these transactions. However, staff recommends that we make a change to allow the customer to pay the processing fee. The annual budget savings of passing along the online processing fee to the customer would be approximately $100,000. A processing fee would not apply to automatic bank draft. It would not apply when using an individual's personal bank online bill pay. It would not apply when payments are mailed, and it would not apply for cash or check payments made in person at the utility services office here in City Hall. Staff recommends the authorization to pass along the credit card processing fees to the customer effective January, I'm sorry, July 1, 2019.
This is under Finance Administration, Mr. Ron Finley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the administrator has described ably the details of the program. We're merely passing on fees that are charged by processing companies. It's a customary practice in business and not-for-profits and other organizations out there. The city has never passed that on to the customers. We're merely asking to take that option, and so saving $100,000 per year, if you choose to pay one obligation or another to the city, and you do not like paying processing fees. She just offered four alternatives that are acceptable, and for those who choose the processing fee, and it gets charged by a company, we'll just pass that along to everyone there. So I move approval of 2019-159.
Motion, second, in discussion, although it's in favor of motion. That's approved 6-1. Ms. Wilkinson voted in the negative. Commercial building permits, we have none. Eight consent agenda. Ms. Jones, will you please read the consent agenda for council's approval?
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item A, approval of the April 15th, 2019, Mayor and Council meeting minutes. Item B, approval of the April 15th, 2019, pre-council meeting minutes. Item C, approval of the April 11th, 2019, Committee of the Whole meeting minutes. Item D, approval of property liability insurance annual renewal with Georgia Local Government Risk Management Agency, GERMA, for $607,263, and authorize the mayor to execute related documents. Item E, approval of excess cybersecurity coverage renewal with Towers Watson Chubb Insurance for $6,879, and authorize the mayor to execute related documents.
Do you hear motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
A motion, second, although it's in favor of motion. That's approved 7-0. Item nine, as committee reports, we'll start tonight with Mr. Ron Finley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, we're in the middle of the final phases of the budget process. We've had hearings. It's published online. We've had comments. Our last meeting of the COW, we walked through details, and we'll have a couple more public meetings where the public can have input and hear the details of the budget. We feel like we're honing in on the details as it has worked its way through the staff process and the administration, so we're excited about getting the final pieces of the puzzle. As always, it's a challenging thing to put the numbers together every year to maintain our required balanced budget, where we're going to do that this year again. And I'm proud of the strength of the finances of the city of Smyrna, and I appreciate the staff for the diligent work to get us to this point. We're not quite done yet, but we will be soon. Thank you.
Mr. Tim Gu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of quick things. Last week, Campbell High School Education Foundation had their annual golf outing, which was a big success, and a big thanks to the sponsors and all the folks that came out to play. Raised about $12,000, and that funding goes to support the education initiatives at Campbell High School. So thank you to all of who donated their time and money and came out to support a great cause. Also, thank you, Mayor, for the education awards. What a fun night. A lot of positive energy in the room here, and I really appreciate the chance for all of us to be able to celebrate and support the great schools here in Smyrna. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Susan Wilkinson.
Yes, I'd just like to announce that Food Truck Tuesdays starts tomorrow night. It's the first of the whole summer that when the Food Truck Tuesdays happen, so in that time period, we'll be from 5:00 to 9:00, and that starts tomorrow night. Thank you, at Taylor Bronner Park.
Ms. Corky Welsh?
I have no report this evening, Your Honor.
Ms. Marilyn Blackham?
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to kind of ditto what Councilmember Guo said about Monday, the 29th, the Campbell High School education golf tournament. It was a lot of fun. It was good to see Councilmember Guo out there. It was Team Guo. Did you guys win? Were you the winner?
It's a deal. They didn't count all the strokes.
Better than we did.
I'm sorry?
A little funny math. No, somebody beat us by one stroke.
No way.
I know.
Well, it was great. It was fun. It was good to see all the support that we had out there in supporting our Campbell High School. And also, again, tonight was really a fun night for the mayor's education awards, thanks to everyone that came out and supported all of our students. It's really exciting, and the volunteers and teachers as well. And with that, I yield...
Ms. Andrea Bluestein.
Thank you, Your Honor. I don't have a message this evening. Thank you.
Mr. Derek Norton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My dad just left this morning. He drove all the way back to Iowa. He's been here the last week, but he and I got to play in the Arthur Bacon Tournament this weekend, the annual Arthur Bacon. It was a great tournament, and if you missed it, please come out and play next year. A really good event. And then I just want to say thank you to Mary Moore and Rebecca and the library staff for putting on a good event this weekend. The KidCon, I got a three-and-a-half-year-old and a two-year-old that went up to the community center and had a big time, so appreciate them putting that on, without a yield.
Ms. Tammy Sadler Jones?
No report, Mayor.
Scott Andrews?
No report, Mayor.
Scott Cochran? Terry Graham? Tina? Okay. We do not have showcase hearing, citizen's input. We have three folks that have signed up. Melissa Glover, 1693 Donnell Lynn Drive, southeast Smyrna, Georgia, 30080, Sustainability, Posh Pack nonprofit.
Good evening. I'm excited to be here tonight to talk to you all. I am Dr. Alicia Glover, and I want to talk a few minutes to address sustainability. As a former Smyrna Citizens Academy participant, I'm well aware of keep Smyrna beautiful and all of the amazing things that they are doing, but I would be remiss if I did not talk about what more Smyrna can do in this space. Sustainability offers additional opportunities for economic development within our city. The economic development component of sustainability is one in which surrounding cities have already recognized and begin to take action upon. I only ask that when thinking about sustainability for Smyrna, I ask that you think about the opportunities it can afford us, our businesses, what actions are necessary to implement and expand our current sustainability plan. Shifting gears, I also want to introduce something really special to me, and that's my community organization and soon-to-be nonprofit here in Smyrna, Posh Pack. Posh Pack empowers young women through access to feminine hygiene in our schools. Studies have shown one out of every five American girls misses school or leaves school early because she does not have access to feminine hygiene essentials. So I created Posh Pack out of the need to provide these young women in school with the resources that they need so they can truly focus on learning and reaching their full potential. I currently work with schools in Smyrna and elected officials like yourself to make sure adequate funding is allocated for the resources for these female students. We have had the pleasure to work with the Smyrna Education Foundation, which I'm truly grateful for. grateful for. Just recently, we delivered over four hundred items to Campbell High School, and we've delivered two hundred items to Griffin Middle School just last week. Because of Posh Pack, students at Campbell High School no longer have to walk across campus to the nurse's office to receive items. The items are now distributed throughout their campus because of the additional resources that they have. Additionally, the resources that was given to Griffin Middle come in Posh Packs, which are pink and purple bags, and offer a level of discretion for our teenage girls, so they now are not as self-conscious about receiving these items at school. This may not seem like a big deal, but in talking to a nurse, it is a very big deal for middle school girls. Posh Pack is very excited about the 1.5 million dollars Representative Jan Jones has pushed to be allocated for this need. We now on our website have a page called Ally Page, which I'm working with elected officials and those who support this need to advocate for girls' resources to be a published advocate and sponsor of this opportunity for our students. So I look forward to working with you and hope that you all will be an advocate in these resources for women in Smyrna. Thank you.
Al Joyha Turner, 4239 Millside Walk, Smyrna, Georgia, 30080, Sustainable Smyrna.
Good evening. I just wanted to say thank you for, Councilmember Blackburn, for inviting me, and this is my first time to attend a council meeting. I've been here in Smyrna for thirteen years now, and with the Sustainable Smyrna Initiative, I came to know what the city somehow does, and my kids really love the parks here in our city, and we love our city. So that's also thank you all for your services.
Leonard Robinson, 1809 Teasley, Southeast 30080, Sustainable Smyrna.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Councilmember's staff, Leonard Robinson. And again, I'm a newbie to Georgia. This is going to be my second spring and my second summer, so we'll see how it goes. But speaking of climate, Sustainable Smyrna, as we raise that sustainability issue, starting with Councilmember Blackburn's question, what would a sustainable Smyrna look like? It's gaining momentum. More people are coming, coming together. Well, also, our partners are saying, hey, here's funding. There's one funding I want to talk, talk a little bit about to you tonight that's just perfect for the City of Smyrna if we decide to go forward. It's sponsored by the Southeast Sustainability Directors Network. It's called the Southeast Sustainable Communities Fund, a letter of intent due June 24th, and the purpose to accelerate the adoption of sustainable best practices in the southeast of the United States. Some of the things they're going to have is mitigation and adapting to climate change, and the one I like especially is leveraging community partnerships. The grant is for seventy-five to one hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, two years. No grant will be over three hundred thousand dollars. The qualifications are, you have to be in the southeast. I think we hit that one. But there's one that, one bar in the way. You have to have a person with the title Sustainability Director, Equity Director, or somebody that does cross-departmental communications in the areas of sustainability. Believe it or not, that's the only thing that knocks us out the park for seventy-five thousand dollars a year to one hundred and fifty thousand a year's funding. Just wanted to bring it to the attention, because we call ourselves Sustainable Smyrna, more and more people, more and more organizations are sending us resources. You raise that sustainability flag, it just goes. If you'd like a copy, I know I've already given our sustainability champion on the council, Councilmember Blackburn, a copy of it, but if you'd like a copy, just let me know by blinking or whatever. If you want a copy, just let maybe Christie know or somebody in the office that has my emails. I would be glad to send it out to everybody. And then I just want to say congratulations to Chief Lee on the certification. I sit on the civilian review committee, and everything that, all the nice things, I can, I can second that motion on the nice thing said. Anyway, have an excellent, sustainable day.
That's the final person that signed up for citizens' input. If no other business be brought for this body, I'll create this meeting adjourned at 7:34.